Chris Harold, or you can come on down then. You can come on down after him. Mr. Harold, go ahead. I got you first. You're on top here.
Of course. Thank you very much, Commission members. The, uh, I want to compliment the presenter for his artful use of numbers to show his imagination and vision. However, we can make numbers say anything. In fact, his number presentation, his magical number presentation was very effective on me. I was numb from it. The true fact is that this particular department has engaged in a pattern, practice, and custom of waste, fraud, and abuse of power. The mayor suggested that we wanted a city that's free, that's, uh, safe. However, Thomas Jefferson said that we can neither be safe and free because we'll be neither. When we give up our rights to be free at any cost, we are in danger of losing all of our rights, which we're imminently so right now. I have specific firsthand competent knowledge that this particular department has mismanaged historically as contradicted to his story, Mr. Jeremy. The appropriate use and prudent use and respectful use of the people's trust and their monies in the administration of the office of the sheriff should not support using seventeen patrol vehicles, three motorcycles, four NHP units, and a helicopter on a mere traffic stop on a peaceful seventy-eight-year-old man who kept his hands in sight peacefully on the steering wheel whenever his window was broken out and he was maced, threatening his heart attack repair with the mace chemicals, with no fire in the car. He used a fire extinguisher that was moved from the late Mr. Billy Walters patrol unit that he retrieved from one of the patrol units there to break out the window without any probable cause, without any suspicion of felony criminal activity. And there were over twenty-five officers on that one traffic stop at the point of Summerlin Parkway between Ram Part and Durango last July and August of 2012. I know of other incidents where they used multiple vehicles and officers to stop a moped, which has not historically been a licensable vehicle in Nevada, according to the NRS, because if it's less than fifty cc's, it doesn't require to have a license, a helmet, or other things. But to use officers and waste resources of the people to abuse their trust and their funds to exhaust this many wasteful resources on that type of triviality just to generate revenue is an abuse of the people's trust. Thank you for extending me my five minutes in spite of the fact that the sheriff's department had forty-five.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name's Michael Turley. Last, here, I live here in Las Vegas. Let's make clear that more enforcement does not equal more prevention. That fear factor myth was dissolved years ago in Chicago, Detroit, Washington, even Washington DC and a host of other cities across the nation. How many bonds are the residents of Clark County burdened with? How many bond shortfalls does it take to begin to see that better management of funds and proper training gets better results than just throwing good money after bad? How does Las Vegas, how many Las Vegas police cruisers are used as personal vehicles by off-duty officers? I see it all the time unless they're patrolling the streets with their families. How much can Clark County residents bear to support the whole state of Nevada and continuously be asked for more tax support for our county services? Why, where does it say that draining the residents of the county will increase job opportunities, education, public awareness, and individual responsibility and efficient fiscal management? Doesn't happen that way. And furthermore, we, we sit here every time we come in here about increasing this tax or this fund or whatever, and that's all well and good because we want the best we can get. But if the population's going to be brought up by four percent, then it's going to increase our revenues. Why do we need to take further burden? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're back.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for your time again. Uh, Don Devine, we're in song court. Uh, I wish Commissioner Collins were here. I know this is, this is one of his, his big issues. Uh, he's, he's in support of this.
He can hear he's in the back. Assuming he's in the back listening.
I'm glad because I know there are a lot of people here that have, have comments that they, they want him to hear. Um, my, I thank the gentleman for his presentation. Uh, it's definitely very well thought out. A lot of man-hours went, went into that clearly. Um, I would invite you next time I'm negotiating compensation rates for myself and my employee that you come along and, and help to present that so that I can, uh, demonstrate to people my, uh, the compensation rate that I need to be increased. That being said, I didn't see anything in that presentation regarding, um, increased cost of living for, for your constituents. I didn't see anything in there including how it's going to affect my pocket regarding, um, the increased cost of mandated health insurance. I didn't see anything in there that shows me how I am going to reap benefits or actually be able to pay this increased sales tax, the, the, it won't be a burden, a burden on my family, be a burden on me. Uh, the recovery from the recession is not going as smoothly as that beautiful chart. Uh, personally, I, I only speak personally, as, as much as that chart shows, the recovery isn't that strong. Um, I felt it in the workplace, I felt it in the grocery store, I felt it at the gas pump, I felt it everywhere. I don't have the money. I, I appreciate that you wear a target on your chest, Sheriff, and, and that the, all the police officers wear targets on their chests in the name of protecting us from, from some nefarious efforts to, to rob us of our liberties. But when you take money out of my pocket, you are robbing me of my liberties. So I thank you for your time. I wish you all happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate. If you don't celebrate anything, enjoy your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, we've got to ask you to please refrain from applause or catcalling any of the speakers. We've got a lot to get through. We've got a long agenda today. Mr. Collins, good morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Chris Collins. I'm the Executive Director of the Las Vegas Police Protective Association. I speak before you today, quite honestly, somewhat unprepared. Today was the very first time I have seen that presentation from Mr. Aguero. I was told by the sheriff a month ago when he was here that he would get with us at the PPA and explain the presentation to us, and in that presentation it would hire one-hundred-and-twenty-three police officers. Today, that number is a hundred and one, and I've never seen the presentation. So today, I am against the hybrid plan, and let me tell you why. Point one-five should hire a minimum of two-hundred-and-fifty brand-new police officers. If the point-two-five hired six-hundred, we're getting over half of that. So do the math. It should be two-hundred-and-fifty policemen. I think you're right on the track, Commissioner, Chair, uh, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. You asked how many vacancies we had. I have those numbers for you. Fiscal year two thousand eight and two thousand nine, in total, in total, commission strength of the agency was authorized two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight. We had two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven. When the fiscal year started, we were short three-hundred-and-thirty-one commissioned officers. When the year ended, we were short a hundred-and-eighty-five. That was the last growth the agency has had. Fiscal year nine, ten, we were authorized two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one. We actually had two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nine when the year started. We were a hundred-and-seventy-two positions short. When the year ended, we were two-hundred-and-forty-four positions short. That trend continues in eleven. We started fiscal year eleven, a hundred-and-fifty-three positions short. We entered two-hundred-and-four short. In fiscal year eleven, twelve, we were fifty-seven positions short at the start, a hundred-and-forty short at the end. All in all, eighty million dollars of taxpayers' money to hire policemen that were never hired. Eighty million dollars. That's off the police department's website. That's not, those are not Chris Collins' numbers. This is reported off of their website dated ten-fourteen thirteen. Authorized two-thousand-six police officer positions, one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-one, short sixty-five. More cops, five-hundred-and-forty-nine authorized, five-hundred-and-eight in working policemen, one-hundred-and-six short. That the money is there for. You hit it on the head. The agency has chosen not to hire. Now, have they hired the twenty-nine-hundred you authorized? Would you have continued to authorize them and maybe they would have been laid off? We'll never know because they weren't hired, okay? No way should the taxpayer's sales tax be increased without two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred additional policemen that we desperately need. It's not a matter of do we need them? They are desperate, desperately needed. If you take the money that they talked about in Mr. Aguero's presentation, one-hundred-and-thirty-two million dollars in the more cops fund, he's going to hire a hundred-and-one policemen? That's ten million dollars. Where does the other forty-seven million dollars go that he's going to spend from that fund? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir. Good morning. My name's Robert Andrew. I'm a Las Vegas resident, and thank you for your time today.
Morning, sir.
Um, I was wondering if, can I put something down here to show on the screen?
Yeah, you can try. Let's see how it shows up. Uh, yeah.
This is from the Bureau Labor Statistics, and it shows the average mean salary.
Could I ask you to focus in there? You, they got it. Okay, thank you.
And if you could see, the Clark County is in dark blue. That's one of the highest salaries in the country. This is according to the Bureau Labor Statistics. Now, I want to make one thing clear. I am all for more cops. Just like Mayor Goodman said, if we can guarantee the money is going to go for more cops. This is our money. This is my money. This is your money. This is all these folks' money out there. I haven't got a raise in three years. We're all tightening our belts in the private sector, so why can't the public sector do that as, at the same time they're taking money out of our pockets? And like I said, I'm for more police officers. That's fine if we can only guarantee that the money is going directly to that and that only. And as you can see, the salaries of Clark County officers, sheriffs, and police are high, the highest in the country, according to the Bureau Labor Statistics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, my name is Jason Weinman. The more cops tax has two parts, but, um, I'm only going to talk about the sales tax because I'm, you know, afraid of being critical of Metro in front of Sheriff Gillespie and because I'm an economist, so I know a little more about it. Sales taxes, as one of the Commissioners mentioned in questioning, uh, sales taxes are regressive taxes, which means they're not indexed for income the way, the way an income tax is. So they fall either on producers, distributors, manufacturers, um, and retailers, or on consumers. Um, that's the first order effect. Since they're not indexed, um, the tax incidence falls, I'm sorry, economics is kind of a dismal science, uh, and econometrics even more so, but, um, tax incidence falls either based on elasticity of demand or profit margins. Prices go up because that's what the tax does, and those goods which don't have a high enough profit margin to allow people, um, to produce those goods and profitably at that price will no longer be offered. Uh, and goods with high, high elasticity of demand that people have to buy at any price, uh, things like food, paper goods, uh, essentials that, that, uh, that really come to the poor on a day-to-day basis, um, that tax incidence will fall almost entirely on consumers and almost immediately. Uh, those goods that, that have a lower elasticity of, uh, sorry, a higher elasticity of demand, uh, and higher profit margins, um, things that, luxury goods, optional goods, things that we don't really need, um, initially are going to fall mostly on the producer's side, mostly on manufacturers and retailers. But those manufacturers and retailers are the people, um, who are seeing the, who are taking the hit on the consumption side as well. Uh, the people who work in retail stores, the people who work in the casino industry or the tourism industry, um, you know, the people who sell handbags at Gucci, those are the people who have to pay the producer's side of the tax burden. So if this tax is necessary, um, a sales tax is an extremely regressive, uh, way to do, way to fund it. It, it's almost a punitive tax on poverty. Uh, if you're poor, then you have to pay more. If you're not poor, then your life really won't be affected very much by this at all. So that's how sales taxes work. I also want to address a couple of things from Jeremy's, uh, presentation. Uh, in the field of econometrics, right, when you, when you, uh, when you do modeling and things like that, you can use either a static model, like Jeremy did, uh, which takes no account of the changes that your policy is going to have on human behavior, or you could use what's called a dynamic model. I'm just going to keep talking until I'm finished.
No, no, no. You're not just going to keep talking. I'm going to ask you to wrap it up in a few seconds, okay?
Well, I mean, he spoke for forty-five minutes.
That's right. That's the proponent. He's representing the sheriff. You get three minutes like everybody else gets, and I'm trying to accommodate. There's a long line of people. I've got to ask you to follow the rules. So if you could wrap up, you've got ten or fifteen seconds.
All right. The, the only purpose of using a static model is to, is to ignore human action. Uh, in fact, raising a sales tax will have a real effect on people's, on people's economic behavior. They're not going to buy as many things.
Okay. And with that, I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much for being here today.
I mean...
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it. Next.
I probably won't need all three minutes. My name's Jason Smith. I live in District F. I am, uh, the Vice Chairman of the Libertarian Party of Nevada, and I have a couple of suggestions.
Yeah, if you could, we, sure. There you go. Or if you're going to move, you can hold a handheld one if you got a visual.
I'll stay here. Uh, regarding that wonderfully verbose, uh, presentation, uh, I have a couple of things that we might be able to cut. Uh, for instance, if we stopped enforcing these draconian drug laws, the cops would have a lot more time to go around, whatever else they do, shooting people that are unarmed or arresting people for videotaping them. Uh, so that's one option. Another is possibly a jar on the sheriff's desk, and whenever a cop arrests somebody by mistake, puts a dollar in the jar. Shoots somebody by mistake, puts a dollar in the jar. We might be able to balance this. Insurance premiums, from a million and a half dollars to six-and-a-half million dollars for Metro's insurance because they have to pay out every time somebody gets shot and sues. Let's fix the problem instead of taxing everybody for more money to support these cops that aren't getting the discipline. Maybe fire one. That would be a nice. I think that's all I need. So if somebody needs a minute fifty, they got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is John Johnson. I'm the State Director for the Progressive Democrats of America. We stand in opposition of the sales tax for more cops. Um, actually, I just learned that was some interesting information, uh, Chair Sisalak, that, um, you guys had the money and you chose not to spend it on more cops. Now you're coming to the people asking us to raise the sales tax to pay for more cops, but you didn't use the money to pay for it. So that asks the question, if you would have used the money two years ago and actually kept the levels at what they were supposed to be, then what would the reality be today? That doesn't play into account, you know, in his graph and everything else. So, you know, how about you guys do what the Chair said and Commissioner Giuliani said is let's wait. Secondly, there's an election coming up in twenty-fourteen. We're going to have a new sheriff. The sheriff already said he's not running. He's already announced he's not going to run, so that means somebody else is going to be leading this organization. How about we see who that's going to be? Let's listen to their vision, their ideas, what the future is going to be. You know, I personally don't want to start a dream or start something with somebody who's leaving. He's not going to be here in twenty-fourteen. We're going to have somebody new. So maybe we can start a fresh, we can work on a fresh start. Another thing, you know, everybody keeps talking about more cops, more cops. More cops do not equal better results. Why don't you train your cops? I would rather have a sales tax. I would pay a sales tax for more training. Train your officers.
I've got to ask you to please refrain from applauding or catcalling any of the speakers.
Train your officers. Teach them how to talk to people with respect and dignity. Stop going into the African-American and Latino communities treating us like we're nobodies. When you're pulling us over, talking to us because you have a badge, because you have a gun, that we're beneath you. No. If you start treating people with better respect and like human beings and building a relationship with your community, you would actually need less cops. But when you have more cops who just go and pull out their gun and shoot for no reason because they're scared or they're untrained, that's not a recipe for success. And now you're going to put two-hundred more officers on the street, untrained? I'm not talking about training them how to shoot. We all know they shoot well. They shoot real well. But they don't know how to talk to people? They don't know customer service? They don't know about the communities in which they are policing? These are all things that, that is, that creates a good officer. So besides the training, besides the two weeks at the academy, they need to be trained on how to deal with people, how to de-escalate a situation without pulling out your weapon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, did you want to speak as well? Because this gentleman has been, do you mind, ma'am, if he could? Could I ask someone to give him the handheld microphone? Thank you. Can you reach it?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Is it on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is James Bryant. I live at eleven-twenty North Buffalo Drive in Las Vegas, and I started off with thinking about this and going over it, and to be honest with you, let me just sign, okay? We are the number-one targets in Las Vegas, actually in the country, right? Disabled, handicapped, senior citizens, elderly people were the number one, okay? Do I believe there should be more police officers? Yes, sir, I do, okay? Because sometimes I don't feel safe out there myself. I'm an ex-Marine. I think I'm a pretty tough guy, but with all this, I'm not going to be able to protect myself, okay? So, but to take all the money and give it to Metro, I disagree with it. Henderson, North Las Vegas, I go there too, you know what I mean? So I deserve to be safe no matter where I'm at, okay? And if they have money to hire officers that they didn't use, shame on you. You know, that's like, they tell me, Mr. Bryant, listen, you know, it was there for you. You didn't use it. You know, we have the services, so, but, um, it's, it's scary out there, to be honest with you, for senior citizens and stuff like that. And we've had instances at my condos where we call the police, they may not come for an hour, an hour and a half, two hours. Right? You know, what do we do? I mean, people are kicking in doors and, and robbing people and, and everything like that. And we, as senior citizens and disabled people, are the number-one target, and we deserve to be protected, just like anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for your time. Yes, ma'am. Thank you again for...
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nikia Woodson, and I'm President of the Las Vegas Black Historical Society. I was the first licensed female African-American bail agent in the state of Nevada in two thousand and five. I do hold a law degree, and I previously worked for the Public Defender's Office. I mention all that to illustrate that I am connected to the police, the courts, the jails, and the community. I do appreciate the hard work of our police officers. However, it could be much, much better, and it needs to improve. There is a disparity in a person's contact with the police based upon their race, the neighborhood they reside in, or both. As an example, the West Las Vegas community, which is located in eight-nine-one-oh-six, this area is heavily patrolled, and people in that community are racially profiled. I know this because I had my bail office located there for many, many years, and it happened to me. However, where I resided at the time, which was Road to Ranch, the southwest area, I never had any police contact. I'd like to give you a few statistics. As of the twenty-ten census, African-Americans accounted for ten-point-five percent of the population in Cook County. However, according to the sentencing project during that same period, the racial disparity on incarceration is four-point-seven blacks to one white. The black imprisonment rate is two-thousand-nine-hundred-sixteen per one-hundred-thousand people in comparison to white, six-hundred-and-twenty-seven per one-hundred-thousand people. The felony disenfranchisement for the state of Nevada, four-point-two percent for the entire state. However, for African-Americans, it's twelve-point-six percent. So how do we have twelve-point-six percent felony disenfranchisement for a population that only consists of ten-point-five percent of the people? My solution to the problem is Option A with a little twist, or Option B. Option A, do nothing, however, provide more training, specifically racial diversity training on the budget that you currently have. Have less arrests for matters that should be civil, for example, car registration and jaywalking. I process bails for things like this every day. Why are we arresting a person for jaywalking? Why are we arresting people because they don't have car registration? That's a civil matter that should be handled between them and the DMV. Less targeting of specific areas. Maybe if we would spread the police out more and take them out of the African-American and Latino communities, you would need additional sales tax. And last but definitely not least, less arrests for nonviolent crimes are things that do not affect public safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pete Joseph. I, uh, came today in favor of the tax. Nobody wants to bridge eight percent sales tax. That's just a given. Nobody likes that idea. Uh, ramping up at the police force should have started four years ago, basically. Um, we've done this to ourselves. We need to pay special close attention to what's happening between the Obama administration and Detroit. There's going to be a humongous bailout going on here, and what is going on over there is going to affect us as a long-haul truck driver. I can tell you, twenty-four years ago, I used to go to Detroit, and no one would argue the point with me that fifty square miles of the center of Detroit should be cordoned off, evacuated, and carpet bombed with B-52s and bulldozed into the lake, okay? If there's any money left over after Detroit gets billed out, we're going to need truckloads of money. We're going to need two brand-new state-of-the-art jails, one on the south side, one on the north side, and a national media blitz to convince people not to come to Vegas anymore from impoverished areas all over this country and Central and South America because we're broke. We just simply don't have any money. More and more money for everybody. The taxpayers, the property taxpayers are tabs. Um, uh, from all, all over this country, from gigantic impoverished areas of this country, people are getting the message that it's better to be poor in Las Vegas than anywhere else in this country. Just the weather alone here is better than anywhere else in the country. People are getting on Greyhound buses. They're flying in from Central and South America, no more of that trekking across the desert. They're getting on a jet with a visa and overstaying their visa by the tens of thousands. Every day, thousands of, of illegals are being bussed up from El Paso, dropped off with a temporary visa, and they're staying here. In Mexico City, the sewer system is hopelessly backed up, and it's never going to get any better. Tens of thousands of illegals are going to mass on our border, and one way or another, they're coming across. And because we're on the border of California, we're on the border of Mexico, and we have to deal with this. Um, the, uh, the current number of students in our schools, which is overwhelmed, three, four years from now, when they graduate high school, we know there's not going to be any jobs for them. There's, we're going to have rampant crime that, that, that you can't believe. Um, the sheriff understands that what we're looking at here, the most important thing we've got to focus on is keeping Clark County from becoming LA County. Vicious, violent, uh, vicious, violent, I'm sorry. Um, anyway, corrupt LA County. If you've never visited the courtrooms of LA County on Hill Street or gone down, gone down to Long Beach and visited the traffic courts in Long Beach, you need to do that because that's the future of Clark County if we don't act, if we don't ramp up the police force. That's the future of Clark County right there.
Thank you.
I had a question. Tasha Heath, um, eight-nine-one-one-nine, Riding Heights Avenue, eight-nine-one-four-seven. Um, are you guys, you're not voting on this today, are you?
We are not.
Okay. And you're just going to set for another public hearing?
Yes, we are.
I would like to turn in, I have about fifty signatures and comments against this, and I would just like to turn them in to you guys now. I'll bring more next time, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello. I'm Jason Ellis, nine-five-zero-one, West Sahara Avenue. Uh, thank you. I just wanted to briefly say, uh, already a lot's been said about, about the sales tax most likely not actually going to be spent on, or adequately in more cops. Uh, I wasn't here for the whole presentation, but, uh, I think it's very clear that more spending does not mean better policing. It doesn't mean a better system overall. Um, there, you can talk to many people, including myself. I have many instances of, of being approached by maybe two cop cars for, you know, one traffic incident. Uh, people are always complaining that you... People are always complaining that, you know, there's... Why do you need two cop cars for one person? There are often usually two cops in each car, so why four people for one... Four cops for one person being pulled over? And of course, there are the obvious problems there have been lately, or for years, but the problem has arisen much more in recent years of officer-involved shootings and just one, only one officer recently getting fired for it finally after, you know, lots of investigation, whatever, a investigation that's still unclear. But anyway, the point is, my point is that aside from just the sales tax being very murky, you know, we don't know that this will lead to more cops and not as many cops as that kind of sales tax should gain. But we... The problem is not in we don't have enough cops. The problem is the cops are not being trained right enough, as also been said. I'm sorry, they have not been trained adequately to deal with presenting themselves and to give the impression that they're there to serve the people. There's this... They should work more on the dynamic of it not seeming like it's us versus them, like it's, you know, there's a huge widespread image of intimidation of the public by the police. I've been in several situations in which police use extremely excessive force amongst groups of people who are not posing any threat whatsoever. I'll not get into details, but I know from experience that we just do not need this proportion of several cops for each arrest. And the main thing that needs to be focused on is training morale and just, you know, presenting the image of they're there to serve us and protect us and not to throw us into jail and shoot us if you might not be doing what they want at the moment, or if they, you know, obviously, they are often... There are situations where they may be, where they don't know what's going on, so they just need to be trained better in how to handle those kinds of situations, so...
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dirk Teigen. I live in Las Vegas. Is it possible to give my time to Mr. Wyman? I was actually enjoying his comments. I think he was... Some of you may be bored, but I was entertained by that. It seemed that what... I could be totally wrong. It seemed that what he was developing, though, was... It seemed to me that the opinion I was developing, from what Mr. Wyman was saying, was that these type of taxes affect low-income people. And it seems to me that generally, low-income people are the people that are committing crime, oftentimes so. Wouldn't be... We'd be working against ourselves in a way if this tax is hurting low-income people and those low-income people resort to burglary and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Hyatt?
John Hyatt, 8180 Placid Street. We have a tourist-based economy here. We also have a fairly transient resident population. And if tourists are going to feel safe, we have to have effective policing. So the issue really is not whether we're going to have a police department or how many, but how are we going to fund this? And there are a number of elements to that. Certainly, how we... Raising funds is one, spending funds is the other. This is just, I think, the beginning of the conversation. It needs to involve all aspects, not only of the taxation system, but of how we spend that money, and we need to continue it. But in the end, we have to fund our police department. We have to have an effective one. And if that takes raising taxes, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Rick Brown, and I live on Obannon Drive. I thought we had had a vote on this tax some time ago, a month ago, a month and a half ago, and here we are back again, been reintroduced, I think, by Mr. Collins, which there's a hole over there. Now, he was here to hear the discussion earlier, but I've noticed that as soon as the public discussion came up, he's gone. I'd like him to hear what I have to say, and I'm against this tax. I would like to see, well, things change with our police department. And I know that we need a police department, of course we do. But we need leadership that we can trust, that's going to go on in the future. And when they say that we're going to hire cops and you give us this money, I want to see those cops hired. And it hasn't been done. It has not been done. So what guarantee do I have as a taxpayer that I'm willing to give my money and see that, you know, where's it going? What did it do? It didn't do what it was supposed to. And I am against this tax as it's written. I would like to see this wrapped up at some point so we don't stretch this thing on over and over and over again. Let's get some sanity here and straighten this thing out. Thank you for coming back, Mr. Collins. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Commissioner Collins?
Yeah, there's two rooms back there, and I'm not very healthy right now. And so if I don't stay all day long... I heard everybody speaking, there's speakers back there in both those rooms. And Mr. Chairman, I might not stay much longer. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident. I am very concerned I'm here today. You know, I've been before you all, and this problem I'm having is about ready... I've been thinking about leaving this area, really, because that's why I left my hometown. And I don't like to have to move because I'm told, and I want the police department to be able to defend themselves on this issue. I'm told by several people that the police department is the one that got us lying on you disabled people, that's why you stand in distress. Now, I ride the bus every day. I've been before you all on this, how they lying on me. People are selling drugs over me, thieving off me. If the police department is helping support this type of thing, I am a little concerned about it. I want them to be able to defend themselves. Who are the ones that's ordering these people to get on these buses every day and lie on me to keep my name on this program with these drug addicts and drug dealers? I do need some answers. I want them to be able to defend themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no further comments, I'll close the public comment portion of this and turn it back to the board.
Commissioner Sisalak, may I say something?
Commissioner Brager, I apologize for calling on you earlier. Please do, yes.
No, that's fine. Just from the comments that we're hearing from the citizens, I'm actually able to watch it and hear it at the same time, which is good. If I could ask, Sheriff, go ask your question in regards to accountability reports. If this comes back to us and passes, when we have reports every, you know, six months or as academies get out how many officers are on the street and how we're doing that, I think that would be helpful for our citizens.
Sheriff, please.
For record, Douglas B. Clark County Sheriff. Yes, Commissioner, there are accountability factors associated with it as there is with the initial quarter cent. And for the people watching, as well as members of the commission, in regards to a number of comments about hiring and not hiring and availability to hire, I'd like to address, number one, the initial quarter cent. We had unauthorized strength, and we had to reduce that authorized strength because our budget was reduced because of the supplanting language that was contained in the original more cops language, which clearly articulates why those positions had to be reduced and they were not filled. In regards to our general fund budget and authorized positions, each fall, I meet with the city and the county, and they advise me via themselves, via you, what your funding is going to be for the next fiscal year. And the funding numbers that I have received over the last four to five years have required me to hold those vacancies so as to reduce the overall operating expenses of the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. That is why those positions have not been filled in the future, I mean, in the past, on both of those accounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brager, do you have any other questions?
No, I am listening. Some of my questions were asked already, and I appreciate knowing that there would be an accountability report and that we would know where we stand if this moves forward, and I would look at January.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes, Sheriff, there was a... There was a comment, or not so much a comment, but a part of Mr. Guerrero's presentation where there were four options, A, B, C, D. And with those options there, in option A, option A spoke to do nothing, all right? Going all the way to D, D talked about this hybrid. And as you kind of heard from many of the residents here who spoke about just the no hiring or what have you, that didn't take place. I might even believe Mr. Collins spoke about that as well in his comments. But is there a condition in there, Mr. Aguero? I'm not sure if you want to address this as well. Is there some type of condition that's in that hybrid option that speaks to being obligated? As Commissioner Brager's speaking about the accountability portion, about ensuring that there will be academy, that there will be future academies, that there will be the set number of officers met according to what Commissioner Sisalak spoke about earlier, I think there was a 2,000 number that he spoke about? And it seems like we're under that number there. In that hybrid option, is there a condition that speaks to that?
With your permission, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think the brief answer to your question is, is there a hard and fast... I'm sorry, thank you very much. For the record, Jeremy Aguero. Is there a hard and fast number that's set up? The answer to that question is no. If you're asking me whether or not there are elements to the hybrid plan, which essentially provides some degree of assurance that those officers will be hired, my answer to that question is yes. And let me draw the line between those two. There's not a hard and fast number, but the reality of it is, is that in order to take the fund balance from where it is today to where it will trigger those tax increases, the sheriff will have no choice but to not only fill any vacant positions that he may have, but also add additional police officers. But for that, I can almost assure this commission, he will never get below that threshold. Now, I guess that's a little bit of a dangerous game from the standpoint that the potential would be there, that the officers get hired, but then you don't get below the threshold because of increased attrition. Revenues come in above expectation, those type of things. But the onus is more so on the department to ensure a level of service such that this program would go forward, as opposed to the opposite in terms of not hiring and having the revenue because one becomes causal of the other.
Okay. And then seeing that this item, Sheriff, is going to carry over into a new year as you come down to the end of your term here, how do we move forward with ensuring that a number of things that we spoke about, from diversity training to body cameras, to the hiring of new officers as it relates to new academies? What would you put on the record and say to those out there who are still questioning what we previously talked about months ago here on the public record?
Well, I believe the diversity aspect is in place, Commissioner. The cameras, sort of surprised it didn't catch any interest, but it was a fiscal affairs agenda item yesterday for the authorization to purchase those cameras.
Zavon, is?
We're moving forward on that. So I think it's an aspect where, whether it's I head the organization or someone else, this police department has always been professional in the service that it provides. And I believe it will continue to be. In regards to the filling of positions, I firmly believe if the city and the county commit to fulfilling their obligations, it will be a very easy decision for whoever sits in my chair because they will have the funding to fill those positions, unlike myself, the past few fiscal years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I may come back again.
Sir, Jeremy, I've got one question if I could about your... And Sheriff, you and I disagree on this fundamentally, I appreciate it. But my contention is that those positions have been funded by the city and the county, and that, you know, we can disagree on why you chose not to fill them, potential layoffs, and I...
You cut my budget, Commissioner.
Pardon me?
You cut my budget. That's why they weren't filled.
Okay. The positions, you know, unless I could get George here, was that... Is George Stevens still here? Jeremy, in your model, with that, you know, and I spent some time setting your model, your model calls for reduction in the fund balance, not a hiring trigger. It's a reduction figure, correct?
Those two things are interlinked. You put an or in there, so I want to be sure that I'm answering you. The reduction in fund balance triggers the sales tax increase. Those two things are an and, not an or.
Right, but the fund balance has to be reduced, not the hiring of officers. The fund balance could be reduced in any manner. That's my point.
I'm with you, yes.
Okay.
So I understand your question.
So there is no trigger for hiring more officers, there's a trigger for spending money?
Right, but...
Okay. We're in agreement.
Okay.
George, when we made our contribution to Metro, the city and the county, were those 76 positions funded in our contribution?
I don't know.
You don't know?
No, I don't know. The sheriff would have to tell us whether they were or not. I don't...
Commissioner, for the sake of conversation here, I will not deny that when we started July of this year that we had a funding ratio, and right now, that ratio shows 76 open positions that we're going to fill come February and March with two police academies.
Okay. We agree. Then we're on the same page. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, I appreciate. And I appreciate your indulgence with me there.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have a question, Commissioner? Anybody else? This is Commissioner Brown, you? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr.
I think you're ready to go, gentlemen. I think he's got some questions for you.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
More so direction because as it stands now, just procedurally, we will perhaps direct staff to introduce the ordinance the first meeting in January. And then the second meeting in January will be the public hearing and the vote. Is that correct?
We can certainly do that, Commissioner.
And certainly, there's been a lot of information shared. Jeremy, I appreciate the report. I think it certainly was responsive to some of the direction from my colleagues, and I appreciate the do-nothing versus something needs to be done scenario. And I think that's what it comes down to. One of the issues that seemed to be raised by many of the speakers is the funding of Metro. And I couldn't agree more that if we could identify a more stable funding for Metro, something more consistent, that we could certainly do better projections, I'd support that. This county commission doesn't have that ability. That lies with the state legislature. And it's not just with Metro. It's kind of a hodgepodge way we fund local government. But we are a creature of the state, so for the long-term stability of public agencies, I mean, that's a very viable public discussion that needs to take place. Is there a better way to fund local government services? We can't change it today, nor in January. That's a bigger issue that needs to be brought to the state. And I agree. One of the things that was done when the original advisory question was passed and the original sales tax was passed was an acknowledgement of the stability of the Metro funding model. Back then, 2005, 2007, whenever it was triggered, there was an acknowledgement at the state level and the local level that we had to make sure that it wasn't just going to be property tax, city and the county that would fund Metro, that there needed to be additional funding. And that was, I think, in large part, the impetus behind the more cops initiative. Things were going well. The economy was going well, city and the county, property taxes were going well, and the additional money was not needed. And Sheriff, I don't know if it was you or the prior sheriff that went up and said, "We don't need the money," at least at that time. I don't know if that was prudent or a mistake, whatever the case may be. Then the recession hit. And it's important to emphasize what Jeremy stated, that it was the worst recession in our state's history. So what just a few years prior had been a very stable and responsive funding source or sources turned upside down. And I... One of my asks, Sheriff, because the chairman has brought up the point, I think it's important to communicate the whys from the budgeting standpoint. The vacant position, the city and the county's funding, the overall agency, I think that needs to be clarified a little more. I think your reasoning and some of the responses were right on point. But I'd like that to be part of the next few weeks of continued dialogue. But the funding of public safety, very few people, both here and prior speakers and the community at large, very few people will argue that public safety needs to remain a priority. And that's what is... And that's what is, from my perspective before us with this whole initiative, it's the do-nothing option, and you can perhaps criticize or argue the, the modeling that Jeremy used, but the bottom line is if we don't do anything to supplement the men, uh, Metro's funding, then we will see a continued decline of officers that has been, uh, evident the last few years. That has to change, because one of the things, and, and I, I think it's been clarified over the last few months, but one of the things that kept coming up was, well, this isn't more cops initiative, we're just trying to maintain or stem the tide, I think the term was used, and that's true. All we're going to do, if the hybrid model moves forward, is stem the tide. We are kicking the bucket down the road to two thousand twenty instead of next year or the next few years. There still lies the bigger question as far as the true or the appropriate funding and the sources for Metro. I'm, I'm very supportive, have been from day one, to hire more police officers, because if we don't, the, the results are just unacceptable. What it would mean, not only the safety of our community, but the image of Las Vegas is just something that cannot be accepted, uh, as a public policy. So, the funding issue, I, I think this is, uh, it's, it may not be the best, it may not be the most stable, but it's critically needed today to get us through the next four or five years. And a lot of things could happen, I think Jeremy acknowledged that. Uh, it could, uh, I think the assumption as far as the four percent growth, uh, contribution growth from the city and the county, uh, that could be, could be more, certainly could be less. The county is by no means out of the woods with everything else we fund. So, there, there's a big question mark as far as that goes. I think the hiring, a couple of my colleagues brought up, and I think very valid point as far as logistically, is it possible? Can you do the current academy, academy in February, academy in March, and then the next few years continue to do that? I hope we can. Uh, there's, there's also always the concern as far as if you try to go out and hire too many officers at one time, is the quality of the applicant gonna be what, what Metro's standard and what we expect of that? Uh, that's legitimate, and perhaps, Sheriff, likewise, you can, over the next few weeks and over the next month, you can communicate a, a, a hiring plan and logistically how that all works with the, with the various triggers. I also want to acknowledge the criticism that we, uh, certainly have heard of Metro over the last four or five months, and some of it's, some of it's valid. You, it's, it's easy to take incidents or multiple or individual stories, can't argue with that. I, I, I take it for what it's given as far as the truth of what you feel and what you've experienced. But I don't want that, that to diminish the majority of Metro officers, the men and women that go out each and every day and do their job, do it professionally, protect our community, and even over the last few years, uh, I would encourage you to get the reports that have been done. The feds came in and did analysis and audits and made recommendations, which Metro has implemented. They've been very transparent, very responsive. I'd encourage some of you that made comments about neighborhood policing to contact your neighborhood substation. I know that in the northwest, I know in Commissioner Weekly's area, uh, they've done outstanding work as far as getting into the community and being reflective and representative of the community. So, understanding that there's criticism out there, as with every public agency, I don't want that to diminish all the good that's done at Metro, and all those officers, the vast majority of officers that do their job well and do it professionally and protect us. The training aspect, likewise, I think that was, that was brought forth in some of the recommendations, some of the things that Metro has implemented. These are all things that I don't want to be diminished by some of the public comments as far as the public criticism that we've heard. Do some work, uh, do some research, and please, interact. Interact with those commanders and those folks that are leading the, the various substations. Uh, the bottom line again is, I think if we don't find a way to bring more officers on, that we are going to be in a, in a crisis situation. I think we're borderline now. There are statistics, and, and some of the speakers mentioned, and I, I agree with, that more officers don't necessarily mean it's gonna be a safer community. Statistically, though, if you track where we had up over, uh, two officers per thousand and the crime rate and the trending of those crime rates, there was comparisons, there was parallel tracks, and likewise, when we got down to one point seven, we are starting to see crime statistics move in the other direction. And we need to act now, as many of you have heard the last few public discussions, we can't turn on the switch and bring on a hundred or two hundred or three hundred new officers. It takes years to bring on new officers due to the attrition and everything else, and that is only gonna get us to a stable position by two thousand twenty. That question will be debated over the next few years, what we do beyond two thousand twenty. But it's important, uh, I, I think, again, if we do nothing, that first option is just unacceptable. There's too much at stake, and the bottom line, it, what's at stake is our, our public safety. Thank you, Mr. Jeremy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Brager, are you still with us?
Yes, I, yes, I am. I had to take it off of mute. I am.
Did you have any final comments before we move on?
No, I think we, from listening to all the commissioners, the sheriff and Jeremy, I, I think questions have been answered, and, um, hopefully, the public will and knows that they have been heard, and we can continue to work through this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnett?
Uh, Commissioner Weekly, I apologize, sir.
Real quickly, yeah, I wanted to just really get quick clarification in terms of, um, for people who are watching and just trying to understand, um, 'cause one gentleman said he thought this had been voted on and buried, but, um, it was reintroduced, um, in another, in another way, and so just, so if you will, just explain to the public, what are we doing when we come back first meeting in January? Uh, because I, I heard some really good stuff here today, I was probably more educated here today, uh, than what we've been over the last couple of months dealing with this issue here, and listen to both sides here. Uh, Sheriff, I gotta tell you that, you know, we under, I understand, I get it, and I thank you very much, um, for the conversations, uh, we've been having over the last year or so. Um, definitely, um, with this past weekend, uh, we've had a spike in crime. Um, I was over at the hospital yesterday, and, um, went by one room, there was one kid in there who was shot eight times this past weekend, walked by the next room, uh, there's a kid, um, another kid, who's in there who was shot in the back, uh, this past weekend, and two of them passed away. So, we've had some, um, serious stuff happening over this past weekend, uh, but I think, um, it was said by one of the commissioners, a lot of the good gets overshadowed by the bad, because there are some amazing things happening. I, I, I can't tell you what, what's happening in downtown for us. I'm working with our downtown area command, and then my northeast area command has been just amazing, have taken that area over there and have turned it around tremendously, and then to speak volumes as to what's happened over at the Bolden area command over in West Las Vegas, where there was never any type of relationship. But I think the issue that a lot of the public is looking for is just more transparency. People wanna, they, they wanna be involved, and they wanna know, what are we doing? What are you all doing? How are you spending the money? And when they hear about reserves, they hear there are millions in reserves, but yet we're, we're being asked to increase taxes, Lord knows, as I'm at my, in my district and talking to taxpayers, people are stretched to the limit. But I don't know anybody who don't wanna, who, who, who would pick up their phone and call nine-one-one and don't want a police officer to show up. But they also don't wanna have to deal with, and we've talked about this in a number of my meetings that I've had with a number of officers, and I'm fortunate, I've had, have a great working relationship with you all, but it does drive you absolutely crazy, and it, it really makes you upset when people are being harassed for jaywalking, and those are things that a number of people I represent have to deal with, you get ticketed for jaywalking or you're racially profiled and, you know, um, you, you're physically assaulted, and it's a, it's a bunch of nonsense that takes place out there, and, and people have had it with that. But what pains me is that there are so many officers out there that are doing so many great things. You don't ever hear about that. We hear about all the nonsense, and so, um, I just hope, um, and Mr. Burnett's gonna give us an explanation in terms of how we're gonna deal with this. I also represent part of North Las Vegas. That pains me, and I see we have the mayor pro temp, she's still with us here from the city of North Las Vegas, it's painful. Craig Ranch Park, which we spend millions of taxpayer dollars to build this, and we already struggle with the fact of young people trying to find their way here in this county here and giving them outlets. Over there now, you know, just now, the, the park graffiti'd up. You know, you can drive by Craig, you drive down Craig any given day there, and you will probably see two to three to four hundred young people gathered in this park here, and I think that that's where they should be, outside, having a good time, but a lot of people are concerned because it's not safe, but you can also go in North Las Vegas, counsel me, you can vouch for me on this, and then maybe an hour or two passing, you don't even see a police car drive by. And it, it, it's, it's tough, so, in a district like mine where I overlap with North Las Vegas and other municipalities, it's, it's tough. And so, public safety is huge for us, Commissioner. It really is, but we also struggle with the fact that we have a lot of unemployed people who can't afford one more nickel. So, this is a tough, tough debate, and I'm so appreciative that the community really is involved. And we knew that this was gonna be a long discussion today, and we're here for the long haul of it, and I'm glad that you all are putting your voices on the record. Thank you so much for your participation, Mr. Burnett. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Burnett?
Commissioner, uh, staff and, and more importantly, uh, Ms. Miller and the DA's office certainly understand the hybrid proposal that was, uh, offered by Mr. Aguero and with the direction that was offered by Commissioner Brown, we can certainly prepare the ordinance and bring it back before you first meeting in, in January for introduction and, and possibly schedule a public hearing with the board's direction for the second meeting in January, at which point it'd be eligible for adoption.
Thank you, sir.